Hi. Thank you, Chantel. Good evening, everybody. I will apologize. I will open the meeting at 7:02 PM. I apologize that we're a couple of minutes late as we announced a few months prior. We have changed up our procedure so that if there's need for an executive session, we are starting that at 6:30 PM and then dealing with any overflow at the end so that we keep the 7:00 PM start time consistent for our clients, excuse me, for our patrons and for our guests as well as our participating staff. Thank you very much. So we have entered, we opened the public meeting. We entered executive session with a unanimous vote and discussed personnel matters and exited executive session approximately two minutes prior. And in that session, we held no votes, made no motions, took no action. Okay, so just to repeat, we've got the full board represented. We have made quorum. I don't believe now Rocky Smith is joining. I think our first call going forward is we'll handle barring some special need for them, right? Okay, well, then perhaps we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Chantel.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I just wanted to check across the trustees that we are generally agreed with the order of the agenda. We've talked about some additional motions, et cetera, but in terms of format, we're generally on target? Okay. All right. Chantel, do you see any raised hands for public comments? No, at this time. Okay, we're still easing into this. One of the other changes we made is to move public comments toward the front of the agenda, again, to make things easier for patrons and our community. We'll check in again and just watch the screen. And if anyone wishes to raise any last minute public comments, we'll address those at the end. Thank you. Okay, in terms of board administration, we can proceed with the minutes for the July 17, 2023 regular meeting. So I'll make the, oh, excuse me, John will make the motion.
I move to accept the minutes of the July 17, 2023 general.
I'll second the motion. All in, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. And we'll count on you to change those on our website to final. Can we move into finance, Brian?
Yeah, should I read the report or?
Sure, if you can just call out any, we've posted the financials from Now Rocky Smith. If you can just call out anything.
Yeah, that's not the only item they presented that the banking account needs reconciliation. And so they're going to be working on that once the when the statements are prepared for them. We have a timeframe on that. So I guess we'll report on that in the next one. But other than the statements and accounts, it would be in order.
Okay. And I believe ours special meeting in September, on September 21st, will include financial education from Now Rocky Smith for the entire board. Bob's going to invite department heads. And as part of that, there are a variety of components to that meeting. And one of them will be to talk through the reconciliation process and the claims auditing process. And, you know, try and work with us to work with them to get in a better cadence. Want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, to accept the, I make a motion to accept the, approve the June treasurers' report and monthly bills as presented.
Okay, George, you want a second? Any discussion? Or concerns? Okay, all in favor? Aye, great. Such a relief to have Now Rocky Smith on board. Thank you for the change.
Very detailed.
I wanted to talk about the audit process. I've got kind of a bug that I want to avoid delay as we had with the process beginning in 2022. I don't know, Bob or Chantel, if you want to update us on, I know you've had conversations and sense of information with Dan Zicker Markoff to sort of kick off the process.
Yeah, they've seen all of the information.
They've got all the information.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And they confirmed it's an off-cycle year, but they still require.
They require a final year number, year and numbers every year, but then the details, you want to do it.
Okay. Then process wise, they will provide their report to Bob?
Yes, and then I would that forward to the finance committee and treasurer, and ultimately to the board for acceptance.
Do we need to accept the GASP 75 or does it just go to PKFOD?
PKFOD.
Okay, but I'm just asking process wise.
I give the state to accept it.
Yes, okay. Okay. Okay, great. We talked in the last meeting, Bob, about the problem we'd had with the positive pay. Any update there in terms of quantification of the individuals impacted? Any dollars that are being sought for reimbursement, et cetera?
It was a total of four individuals. Excuse me, six, six individuals, two couples and two additional individuals. All of the same kind of reimbursement regarding Medicare reimbursement from our retirees. So it didn't end this, it didn't affect, for example, our contractors or vendors, although it could. It just didn't. We've offered to reimburse.
That's good because that value report was misleading, right? You know, that showed probably the activity for the month.
Right, you were looking at the activity for the month, but only the six that were that were marked in a certain column were the ones that had been impacted, yeah.
Okay.
So I would actually, if I can put Chantel on the spot again, were you able to contact all six Chantel and offer?
Well, check the areas where we issued, no one requested a fifteen points to be given to them because of any bankruptcy.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you for contacting all of them. Okay. The last financial item I have, you or Brian may have additional, was whether you have additional detail and formal proposals for alternative banking arrangements?
No, not as of yet. Thought I had till the September financial meeting. Sorry if I misunderstood that.
Okay, so that's, the target would be 9/21. I think we need to present it publicly first, so if you could adjust that to 9/11.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss with Now Rocky Smith on 9/21. That makes sense?
Yes.
Excuse me, was this, was this the situation, Bob, where Chase was the only bank that responded?
The local Chase branch? Well, Chase wasn't the only bank that responded to my first calls, but the only one with whom I engaged in the question of whether they would take a portion of our deposits. The Citibank also responded to my initial calls, but based on the conversation, I never advanced the question to them.
But you're going to ask for written proposals from all three, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have anything further in terms of the president's report. Apart to, apart from commenting on the exceptional programming that's been progressing this summer. Bob, can we turn to you?
Is it time for the director's report?
Yes.
Hey. So the director's report this month begins with the adult program statistics and includes very solid numbers. Most of our programs are now live with still a good number of new programs. Sorry, I printed out from the board agenda and didn't have a chance to take a close look before dashing over. March Berlin's circulation report is included, and it looks like our circulation is holding steady or going up. If I can advance to the children's room report, the programs are all very well attended and the number of storytimes that we're holding weekly is right up to four per, four per week, three per week, six per week. I have lost track at how many storytimes they are doing, but others have not because it was mentioned to me out on the floor of the library today, how hard it is to get parking at this library in the mornings. And I said, that's because we're doing at least one storytime almost every day. Turns out more than one a day. I seem a little distracted is because my own director's report cover page was not printed. And so I'm reading from my department heads' wonderful reports, but I don't have my own prepared overview. I'm sorry. Yes, that is exactly what I was looking for, Brian. Thank you. You are a lifesaver. Yeah, so this is actually an older open item that was in the process and development. It's an operational development, which is just a reiteration of my recommendation to open at 10:00 AM on Thursdays to support staff meetings and weekly development. So we would be able to have a monthly staff meeting from 9:00 to 9:50 AM and an additional time for dedicated department meetings at the same time than next week. And that would leave us with two or three additional training times. The last time this was presented to the board, the trustees asked quite reasonably, what kind of topics would you train upon, Bob? And so I included that in this director's report. Two-page list of training topics identified by staff and by department heads. And a question was raised as to what other libraries in Westchester are doing. I identified four or five who are doing substantially similar to what we proposed. And I ran some numbers that show that almost every other library is, has obvious staff development, times that they're close to the public during a normal business day. Because most of these libraries are opening at 10:00 or later. And we're one of the few that opens at 9:00 Monday through Friday. And then a final question from the board.
One, one note on that, when we, when we looked at the public times online for Westchester libraries, we were exceeded by two, that being scars at six. We're standing currently at 65 hours per week. And that would be during the school year. Scarsdale is at 67. Next best would be Rye and, well, your, your prior employer, which I just included as a comparable, at 64 hours. And next best was Yorktown.
Yeah, that's hours of public service and we did, also, I was asked to survey our community to see what would be a good time for us to be closed for some additional training. And you'll see the public survey results came in with 60% agreeing that a well-trained staff is important enough that a later opening would be worth it. And 51% saying that opening at 10:00 AM on Thursdays would not impact them or their families. And only 5% saying that it would negatively impact them or their family. The the open-ended comments were broad and many in support of and many offering other ideas to achieve staff training. But many of the comments, I don't think they fully understood the difficulty it is to bring a full staff of 51 people or even most of that staff together at one point while sustaining public service, multiple public service points with the number of public service hours that we have. So ultimately, that's all in support of this proposal and I could move on to the next.
Do you have any comments?
There were many positive in support of, in the open-ended comments as well. I don't know if you intend to discuss this further or make a motion in support of that for September and forward? Or if this is worth just keeping on on the, on your agenda for a while for the, for thought and consideration?
John, do you deem it appropriate to make a motion at this point in time?
No, not really. I need to make a motion.
Further discussion down the road?
Further discussion, yeah.
Well, another operational development that came up in the PLDA meeting is just that true interlibrary loan, well, as of today, it should be back. But just to let you know that true interlibrary loan as opposed to WLS system holds, they were suspended for a couple of weeks from July 27th through today to accommodate the staff members' vacation. Most of my director's report this month is a long-range strategic plan update, which is attached as a document, which I did print out. Don't know if you need me to go over some of the highlights.
Yeah.
Okay, can I just, Bob, can I just go back one second?
Sure. The interlibrary loan process from July 27th through today through August 14th. Is that, when you said two interlibrary loans, you mean just two?
I mean, I mean, true interlibrary loans. So anytime that one library borrows an item from another library to lend it to their own patron could be called an interlibrary loan. But most of our interlibrary loans are handled simply by what we also would call WLS system holds, where somebody places a hold on an item and they send it from one of the other member libraries of WLS.
Right, it's a truck that travels.
Yeah, true interlibrary loans are when a WLS library doesn't own the material at all. Happens a lot more for older out-of-print items, for rare academic books. Rare readers, academic books are the other great example. And so you still, as a public library patron, have the ability in many cases, to access that material through your public library. All you have to do is come in, if it's not in our catalog, and ask the librarians for help and they will try to find.
It's a wonderful service. I guess the question I had was that it was down for, it looks like a week and a half, two weeks?
Yeah.
And that was because of WLS or because of something inside?
Because of WLS. So a lot of those, that interlibrary loan, true interlibrary loan is handled by one interlibrary loan processing clerk who took some vacation time.
And there was not a vacation sub that was put in place?
That is my understanding.
So when this person goes on vacation, the entire interlibrary loan system for Westchester County comes to a stop?
That was my understanding.
Okay, I just want to say that clearly so that everyone understands that that's how that's working.
In many cases.
Other parts of Westchester County run similarly.
In many cases, an interlibrary loan is expected to take six to eight weeks to produce. And so a two-week vacation is sort of built into that expectation of six to eight weeks to produce.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure. Okay, so moving on to the long-range plan update. Among our goals for, to champion diversity, equity and inclusion, I am reporting that a step-generated wheelchair accessibility study, which was discussed at previous updates, that's been presented to the buildings and grounds committee for discussion and adoption and making changes where possible, some of which are quick fixes and others of which are more like long-range considerations when we work with architects on other things. I was, a lot of this is old news, but that's the nature of a long-range plan update. Warm welcoming spaces and their accessibility, they're really at the forefront of the courtyards and exteriors proposals that we solicited and to improve library exteriors, courtyard and accessibility. That will be presented at this meeting, one of, one of those proposals. The safety and security needs of an age and culturally diverse staff and public were considered in many of our ongoing public safety improvements. We're developing metrics to evaluate the diversity of the collection and its program. And noting that the current lack of professional peers supported data for collections and programs has been acknowledged. The staff are developing one internally for September 2023 delivery to this board. And the metric to conduct a diversity audit of the library's collection and programming. The staff recommendation is to eliminate a retrospective collection audit entirely because it would be very, I would say, cost prohibitive, retrospectiveism, everything that we currently own. But the staff recommendation is to continue ongoing new materials audit as we purchase new things throughout the year and to continue auditing that way. The diversity of programs has been codified into our program policy that, I'm sorry, it has been. The program policy is under development, and so the diversity element will be included in the program policy. And one of our metrics for improving the library's community engagement is to develop an updated website that is well under development currently. It has been since January or February, we started the contract and that is slated and moving along on pace for an end of October launch. We're including monthly updates in the director's report. There was a metric to double the number of subscribers to our newsletter. And we haven't achieved that yet, but we have currently gotten up to 1,558 unique subscribers. That's from a original number of 1,130. So we've seen a 38% increase so far. And there was a metric to create and implement program surveys to be reviewed annually. And I've recently reported to the board and the public the many feedback opportunities that will be built into our new website, including the ability to make email feedback surveys instantly from all of our registered programs and to launch broader annual program survey as part of the new website. So on the long-range strategic initiative to provide relevant and impactful library services. One of our first metrics is to restore this theater that we're in to fully operational status. And the AV upgrades desired in the theater were subject of a competitive RFP, ready for review and perhaps even adoption by the board at this meeting. Work in conjunction with local libraries to host workshops and professional development for staff. I'm reporting that training opportunities from WLS and nearby systems are regularly shared with library staff and supported through scheduling accommodations, et cetera. One of our broad strategic initiatives is to ensure sustainability of the library. And I can say that the, we reviewed, that a review of financial policies and fiscal control training is scheduled for the director, trustees and administrative staff in September. And on the broad.
Just jumping back to sustainability, as part of the website implementation, aren't you looking at curtailing or, or removing the paper mailing of our newsletter? With just physical copies available for those who want them at the desk?
Yes, and, and, or reducing it to an annual or a, for a system-wide mailing and print-on-demand for less, less frequently needed. Let's say that it's still a discussion though, because there's a range of philosophies on, on how only a a full mailing will reach people who don't regularly use the library, which is part of our intended audience. On the broad strategic goal of identifying creative solutions to utilize space and infrastructure, I can report that the parking lot recircusing was completed in July. And we added stripes crosswalks in strategic locations. I can also report that a site plan project will be revealed at this meeting based on the previously discussed facilities, massages, to the courtyard, exterior and facade project. We're adding or have added an additional smart board to the largest study room. And we switched network IT administration to WLS circa 2022. Like I said, it's old news. I just hadn't reported on it previously. But we will be sustaining the contract for 2023.
And we're making additional space available for the public with the new conference room, right?
Yes, we're adding one more. Jennifer called it a conference room. I'd call it a study room. Either way, we're adding one more.
Space.
One more study room space, but meeting room space.
Reservation, right?
A reservation. These are constantly in demand and I'd say almost always. And we have a metric to earmark funding to redevelop the outdoor space, so kind of hitting the same point again and again, but the scale and the cost of the project that we'll be proposing today, it surpasses 50% of the state construction match limits. But some portion of the project could qualify for multiple years' grants. But some portion of the project could qualify for multiple years' grants, it's strategically timed line. I think timeline is a real word, but I made it up for this occasion. Due to the size and the scope of the project, I may recommend bonding for the remainder of the of project through a public vote and or launching a fundraising campaign for the friends of the library. That was all under the metric to earmark funding to redevelop the outdoor space.
You want to talk about the AV RFP and funding as well?
Yeah, we're pursuing the, the New York State Construction Grant is limited every year to how how much money they will give, not to any one library, but to each of the library's systems. And so the WLS allocation has to be shared by the thirty, thirty-some, thirty-eight, I think, member libraries. So there isn't enough state construction funding in one year for us to pursue everything that we'd like to. So this year, we're ready to advance on these theater, the theater restoration. So we'll be applying for the state construction grant this year to underwrite up to fifty percent of that project. So my recommendation would be to advance the courtyard and exteriors project for the next two grant cycles and to split the work up to fall in such a way that we would be able to request state construction grants for two consecutive years.
Okay, so when we talk about the AV proposed RFP proposals, you'll speak with more specificity in terms of what you would anticipate could be accomplished, right?
I will try. So another part of my director's report is the full results of the community survey, and that included survey of the public and how they would like to use their courtyards, plural, and their other exterior spaces of the library, and I included those results. It also included the question I've already discussed of whether they would support the library closing for one hour for staff development needs. And the final question of whether library trustees should serve five or three-year terms. So those survey results were attached to my director's report. With regard to financial matters, I spoke to one of the three national banks about moving a portion of our reserves. And the discussion with the others is pending. Awaiting delivery of signature card from Valley Bank, which will allow new trustees to sign checks. Actually, I've had to correct that bullet point. Apparently, John's already been a signatory for a short period of time now. It's, it's only George at this point that needs to be added. I learned that in an email exchange. I discussed the issue of positive pay and, you know, Valley really gave a persuasive argument for its continued usage due to the very strong the security features that it gives us and the kinds of check, check mail fraud that organizations of our nature have seen. So they gave a very persuasive reason to keep it, but the possibility of moving many of our routine payments to electronic payments would obviate positive pay for those kinds of payments. So we would, my recommendation is that we continue using it while for paper checks while moving as many routine payments to electronic as as our fiscal controls will allow.
What was Noraki Smith's recommendation on positive pay and the current situation?
They agreed that routine payments can be made electronically and would obviate the need for positive pay. They didn't have a strong recommendation of being one way or the other on whether to retain positive pay, or at least I don't recall one. Chantel, do you recall, Noraki's been having a strong recommendation, one way or the other?
What, what would be the process steps for implementing electronic payments and likely timing?
Well, I think after September is the best time because we've got treasurer's attention. I was recently discussing with them the next bullet point of my fiscal report, which was that we do have fiscal controls in place that are recommended by the state controller that we've brought back the practice of stamping and initialing invoices when signing off on checks in order to satisfy those fiscal controls, one of which is that trustees should have access to every invoice before payment of the invoice, and so by having trustees initial an invoice right there where the stamp is gives you the ability to show that one of the trustees has done that. And the other is that the library director should review budget codes of every payment. I think reason I said all of that is that I think that the electronic payment process would also allow for those fiscal controls to be baked into the process. And if that's the case, then we'd be able to continue meeting those control standards.
So I think that's, Brian, George, you may know as well. I, I think what you're talking about is a change with Valley, not with Noraki Smith. Right?
Well, it's, it's not a change we would implement with Valley without more or less the green light from the treasurers that the thing that we're trying to do is meets our fiscal control standards that are in place.
So you need to obtain a, you need to understand the process through your conversations with our bank and the timing, et cetera, and then present that to Noraki Smith, as well as the finance committee. We don't want to just talk about it as this theoretical concept. Something the board has been behind for.
You know, we're ready to, we're ready to move forward on making that change. Great. I'm reporting on a project that the kids and teen departments met with the Newcastle Historical Society. And together, they're all working on a Chapakua landmark build, Chapakua Landmark Building Lego contest. The library's role in that will be, first of all, to help promote it. But second of all, as a public program element to give kids spaces to work during build times, along with some master Lego builders to come in and inspire and cheer the kids on this project. There was a PLDA meeting held July twentieth at the Bronzeville Public Library. And at that meeting, among other things, I learned that the new Aspen interface appears to be boosting electronic item usage as intended. Previously, I reported that it was using fervor, the, the, I can't remember, fervor stands for now, but it's what lists the hoopla and overdrive living content right in our catalog and encourages people who are interested in ebooks to click on through. And as you can imagine, without having to search three different catalogs for an ebook, people are doing exactly that. They're clicking through, it's boosting. We're in the middle of our own new email domain switch. And I think you all know that because you're all going to be receiving new chapakualibrary.org email domains for your board trustee messages. But the same thing goes on for all of the staff here. There was an annual reports workshop, or there will be an annual reports workshop offered in September with a eye toward building up data collection as you go through the year. So I'm hoping Chantel and I will both be able to attend that. Our IT terms of service are expected in September. The terms are expected in September for renewal next year at approximately a four percent increase. And the state construction.
That's our contract, that's about ninety thousand dollars.
That's the one. And our state construction and deadline, state construction aid deadline is imminent, as I explained, we're applying to the theater renovations.
And then, sorry, just to circle back, because I remember we missed a deadline. In two thousand twenty-two, WLS requires an early sign-on, right? For the coming year's contract, I want to say in September or October, do you know? The IT services agreement, yeah. Okay, I remember Martha. Made the point that we were late last year. Okay, so definitely make a note, if you would, to ensure we're timely in that regard and have time to present the contract.
Okay, yeah, the contract is expected in September, so by the time we meet next month, it may be in front of you. And then that meeting ended with an art and facilities tour, which I had to mention because it took up a good twenty-five minutes of the meeting. In the month of July, strangely, we had no utilization of this theater space by outside groups. That was a change from recent months when it was, seemed to be all the rate.
Was that a reflection of our screen issues, the equipment?
No, I think it might just be a reflection of summer weather. And the fact that I'm, this is my first calendar year, so we seem to be really be hopping in December, January, February into March. But with summer here, people are meeting outdoors and things. Or they're taking summers off from their condo meetings, association meetings, of various kinds. And that concludes the director's report. Now I can get back to summarizing my department head reports. Thank you, Brian, that was a real relief. So the Adult Services Department report gives a positive comment from a patron, which I would like to point out. Two patrons came up and asked if they had to live here to get a Chapakua library card, because they love our library. It's a home away from home. But they live in Rye. They came up in particular for the opera collection and enjoyed using it. You can use the, the, our opera collection even with a Rye library card. And the rest of the directors, the rest of the department head reports. You're welcome to hit me with any questions that you may have. And bear in mind that the library market website project report from Tal and Gwen is also included.
Excellent detail, thank you.
That concludes my director's report.
Okay.
Obviously, automatic internal defibrillator repair and the restored work on board.
It is fully, it was always working, but the pads have been replaced and the battery's been replaced, yes.
Do we need training?
We always need training. I'll say yes.
Well, no, not, I'm not being facetious. Do, do we need to have staff strength in that regard? At one point, you'd mentioned training with respect to the.
It was one of the subjects identified as an area where staff needed training, so yes.
And you're working with the ambulance corps to do that?
Yeah, Chapakua volunteer ambulance.
Is that training something that would be optional or required instead?
Well, there's, yeah. George, I don't know how to begin to answer that. There's, there's no position here that has civil service duties where we could require them to take emergency response training of that kind, so it would only be optional. But if I can schedule it during an all-staff training hour, attending the training training upon it would then become mandatory for those who we were able to schedule. Even with a staff training hour, not all of our fifty-one staff will be able to attend every training session, but they would then be recorded and staff could optionally watch the training later on on the clock.
Your thoughts on the board packet? We ran late. Again, our lateness is diminishing, but can you comment? You put a new process in place.
I put a new process in place, some of which was delayed by an internal hiring process. Sent me back a good day in my work. I would have been able to make up for that lost day if I had been able to work over the weekend. And it so turned out that I was not able to that weekend. I'll just continue to try to improve the timing and give myself, schedule for myself the time that I need to gather the many pieces and post.
Well, the pieces are gathered. So actually, all you have to do is have a process in place wherein you or your delegates post the information, right?
The pieces were not all submitted by deadline.
Did we post what was submitted?
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying to go ahead and
Yeah, we've talked about.
Proceed and post.
Right? So can you make that change, necessary change to the process?
Yes.
So we've got an obligation to the public.
Yes, we did.
We don't want to fall short on as a board. Anything else for our library director? Anything from friends?
I haven't heard anything. We'll see them in September. They do? And what do they do? Oh, that's right, because they underwrite that program.
Okay, let's turn to the committees. Brian and George, anything further on finance? Have we hit it all?
George and I did meet.
Oh, forgive me.
Working together.
An element.
Oh, of course, I, my apologies, I skipped, I skipped. Brian, I apologize. Continue your thought and then we'll step back.
So I just, Jordan and I had a first meeting and looking forward to working with them.
Good, good. Thank you. Happy to have you on the committee, George. Okay, so forgive me, the shining star of the director's report is to include one of our department heads for a presentation on the, the issues they're dealing with, the trends, et cetera, with that department. And Marge Perlin is going to present on behalf of circulation. Shall we pull the chair forward?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Happy to have sat and stood as the person messiest guest.
So just to. Explain what circulation is on a library. When you walk into a library, the first thing you notice probably is all the really beautiful books and items and DVDs that. Make you want to gather up everything and put it in your bag and take it home. And the second thing you probably notice is that there are people there who are. Willing to help you find what you are looking for if you don't see it immediately in front of you. And. Those two things happen because of our professional librarians. Our professional librarians are there to help you. But more importantly, they are curating a collection. And everything that you see on the shelf. That's tempting you to want to take it home is there because somebody has thought through the process of buying it. We have one of the best collections in the county. We are a net lender, which means that more libraries want our stuff than we take from other libraries. It's wonderful to have a library full of books and it's wonderful and other materials. And it's wonderful to have a library full of professional librarians there to help you find the items. And it's wonderful to have a tech staff to label everything. And make sure that it fits into a catalog procedure for finding it. But if nobody took anything home with them, it wouldn't be a library. And so that's what the circulation staff is for. Even in libraries where people are required to read items in the library without taking them home, require a circulation staff. Someone has to connect that item to the patron. Know where it is, know when it's coming back, and line up the next patron for that use. That requires marrying the database that covers all of the materials. With a database that the circulation staff forms. For the patrons, given their, where they live, how to contact them. We don't keep a lot of information on a patron, so it's not necessary. It would be an invasion of privacy. But we have what we need mostly. We need to contact them to let them know the item they want is here. Or to contact them to let them know that item that they have is wanted by somebody else. This all works really well if you have procedures and policies in place that sort of allow for fair sharing. We don't want any one person to have all the items and so no one else can get them. That's what fines are for. Fines are there to encourage good sharing. Fines are also there to provide revenue to purchase items. And it seems only fair that if you need to take items for a longer period of time, so that no one else can use them. And when you give them back, you contribute a little bit so that we can buy more materials for other people to use. We don't ever want fines to be a reason not to come to the library. We don't want fines to feel like a punishment or that you've done anything bad. We are, we are, you know, we're not the IRS. We're the library and it finds our, take you by surprise. Or are feel like too much or. Aren't working for you because you are maybe can't keep track of your materials. That's, that's what we're there to help you with. And we're flexible. And we will help you figure out how to manage your borrowing so that it, it works for you. Okay? And so that's, that's essentially what circulation does. And I'm a little bit of a data geek and I love to pull out numbers and see what our statistics are and. That's, that's what I do and, and you know, Pam, our former directors looked at me and she said, yeah. I can see that you like that. Don't lie. And so they had put me in charge of payroll, which is pretty much the same thing, except instead of patrons, I'm working with employees. And instead of books, I'm working with benefits and payments, so. I've never met a database I don't like. And that's, anybody have any questions?
You know, I had a question. I know that some Westchester libraries have moved away from fines. And I was just wondering what the discussion, the pros and cons. Libraries that collect fines versus libraries that don't collect.
Right, and I have very strong feelings about that, having worked here for almost fifteen years. This, this community likes to contribute resources towards their library and. In discussions about going to find free, the majority of people express a desire not to do that. Again, there are people who, you know, have, have a problem with fines that is going to prohibit them from wanting to come to the library. We're, we're not going to let that happen. Okay, we have a fine forgiveness form, fill it out. Pretty much we just forgive things, but if there is an ongoing or continuing reason for this accumulation of fines. I may try to work with you on how to make that work out better. I have a few patrons that are fine free. We are not a fine free library, but those patrons are fine free. And their rule is, okay, you can have three items instead of fifty. You can keep them until they're overdue. Once you bring them back, I'll take your fines away. You can take another three items. We'll start all over again. So there's ways to do it. That will keep, keep fines from being an issue for that person, but they still can borrow items.
Has that ever been discussed?
Oh, yeah. Amnesty happened throughout the pandemic. It happens whenever there is a problem on our end. You know, a closure or. You know, anything that, that we're not holding up our end of the bargain, everything can come back fine free. So there are reasons for doing it and sometimes you just do it because it's library week and it's kind of fun.
And one more question that I want to put out, but questions, in terms of revenue, what kind of revenue do fines generate?
A good amount. We're looking at ten, so still ten to twelve thousand dollars.
Thanks, good question. Would you say, I've heard many requests from our members about. Their ability to access books electronically and just not being able to find them or having to wait too long for them?
That is not something we're going to hear at the circulation desk. That's a reference desk. Because we don't control the circulation of electronic books. We are strictly dealing with the hard materials through our circulation system. So. That's a really great question. Denise is right there. Do you have a comment?
But so people are telling you that they.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I know that I've talked to just. Friends and that dad who kind of migrated towards eBooks on their iPads. Kindles. And I'm wondering if you're hearing that, I know that sometimes when I've tried to get a book. I can't necessarily get the hardcover, so I'll try to find, find ebook. And I now understand we have the spur system that will.
Put it all together.
Consolidated thing, but then I, it's just not available. It's an ebook. I know that I could buy it as an ebook online. But I, sometimes I just, it's not even available.
We usually do buy the ebook if it's available, especially if it's popular.
I think what George means by available is that he can come in and take that physical copy out, but the eVirgin, there's a long waiting list. And so the supply of eVirons hasn't kept pace with demand.
Well, that's because the ebooks cost. More than twice as much as a hardcover.
That seems to be where people are going in terms of their demand, or at least that's growing.
It is, but the, the publishers only let you. Have one person use. Right.
So if a book costs, say, thirty dollars.
And the book costs fifty five dollars.
Then the ebook requires.
No, ebook costs fifty five dollars and we can get a hardback for like twenty, twenty-five, right?
But that same ebook is like having one hard copy, except it's available by try. Which you, which you own in perpetuity. I mean, I, when I was working in public schools, the publisher would often want you to get the electronic textbook. But then you'd have to renew that license every year. And if you bought that book, that was your property, as long as the book didn't get damaged. It could last two, three, four years as opposed to the license you'd have to pay.
Right.
And it costs money.
Yeah.
Right, you could get. Depending on the offer, you know, maybe twenty-six ebook could. Mean the one. So we do some, so it is, so the other libraries also, you know, buy them and do the same thing and share. Those as well, but it's the, the cost and also just the one person at a time. Deal that's, but if you find that we don't have it at all. Then I think, you know, you should let us know because Vicky's really good. And sometimes. Sometimes that happens with the audio. That is, is not made. The audiobook is not made. The ebook is usually, so, well, we should. Definitely, you know, we should think about.
Okay, but if there are, say, fifteen libraries that have one copy of the ebook. I would have access to all fifteen of those throughout WLS.
Right. Yep, you'd be on, unless, unless they buy a copy that's just for them. Some, some do. So sometimes you'll look on Libby and it'll say that the title is available and you'll, well, me, I'll. It is available and then I'll go click borrow and it says the title is not available. Because once it reads my barcode, then it's like, oh, no, sorry.
It's less expensive. It can be limited to one library, but then allowing it should be, you know, system wide.
Is it less? That I don't know the answer to.
I'm just.
Because I don't, I don't buy those, but. Yeah, is it, is it more or less expensive to buy it for your own library?
It is the same cost to purchase. But some, the, there are different purchasing models and some of them are for a length of time and some of them turn, turn over at checkout. So before, for example, twenty-six checkouts. Then other libraries, other library card holders might use all twenty-six checkouts before someone checks it out. That's not really, I think, a concern that we have, but it is a way in which it could become more expensive to purchase and make them available for everyone.
So maybe some libraries, you know, they just.
Well, actually, that's what's happened. System wide as a result of that, so specifically Harper Collins is the one that has the purchasing model of twenty-six checkouts. And as a result of that, there were certain libraries that were frustrated and felt that their patrons were not actually getting access to this book. And so system wide, the Harper Collins titles are no longer being made available to the entire system. They're only being made available to the purchasing library.
I'm just surprised that the cost is so much more than the hardcover. Do you think that'd be?
Right? Oh, no, they're wildly, that's what they have in the mind. There's.
But so they just set the price.
George, I think it's also worth pointing out that among every demographic of reader. The preference is actually for the book, the hard book material over ebooks. Although there are certainly individuals who prefer the ebook or circumstances like you're describing where you prefer the ebook. But another consideration too is that all of the, all of the licensing models for the ebooks. They really wind up skewing ebook purchasing towards brand new current titles. There's not a lot of great retrospective collection development for ebooks yet. And actually, the Harper Collins model change that we just underwent may support the development of more of a backlist. Because member libraries will be able to keep their ebook longer. So we'll see where that takes us a couple of years down the road. And then the other, the other big thing that I think is missing from this discussion is what we're mostly talking about here with ebooks is the. Overdrive model. The hoopla model is entirely different from that altogether. And our great librarians aren't making the selections for hoopla. Hoopla is, and we purchased it all in the aggregate. And we're, there's never a waitlist for a hoopla item.
Although it doesn't pair with the Amazon.
Well, it doesn't? What is it?
It pairs with your, with your iPad, but it won't pair with the Kindle.
Right, but. And also hoopla doesn't have the, for the most part, doesn't have the new. Books that everybody wants right then. They'll have, they have, they have a great catalog, but they're not going to have the new bestseller that everybody's waiting for.
Marge, can I ask one more question about theft and vandalism and those issues that you face? Books that you think are on the shelf and you realize that someone has walked out with them?
Well, things that we think are on the shelf mostly are not on the shelf because they're the shelves. And we do look for those books constantly. In fact, that's a fun activity for us is where's the book? We don't have a lot of vandalism. I mean, there may be. I used to work in an academic library and the amount of.
Razor plating?
Yes, you know, the, the PhD thing is do, and you've got all, people would take the books and they would hide them in the bookshelves between the books. And I'd find these stashes everywhere where people would take the, the beautiful art books and, and slash out the plates with razors. We don't see a lot of that here. You know, somebody accidentally drops a book in the puddle. Okay, that's it.
Can, can you just briefly touch on your staff and any needs that the department has?
Um, yeah.
Whether staffing or anything.
Yeah, um. You know, I, I, I grew up in Minneapolis and we had this big avenue, Park Avenue, and it had all these trees down the avenue. And they were all elm trees and they reached over the avenue like this. And they were all, they all died of Dutch elm disease because they were all the same kind of tree. And in, in circulation right now, we have all the same tree. You know, I think goodness for my staff. They've all been there a really long time. They're all very loyal and very dedicated. But we need some new trees.
It's a good analogy. Any other needs for the department?
Um, no, not really. It's just sort of reorganizing the staff into my next iteration, I would say.
Well, we really want to thank you in, in, you know, and make sure the public knows. And in addition, as you touched on ever so briefly, in addition to managing circulation for us. The leadership of the payroll and benefits across staff of, of this size. Is a phenomenal time commitment. Those who may not know Marge, may not know that she used to be president of the Chapua. Which was an even larger staff. And, you know, we're sure that some of those talents get brought to bear, but we're, we're very appreciative.
Well, thank you so much. Yeah, I, I do enjoy that part of my job very much.
Thank you, Marge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think. The, the big kahuna from. Committee perspective, returning to our committee reports, is policy violence. Yeah, if you want to start with policy.
So in the board packet, there have been a few, few updated policies that, that I'm going to start making motions about. I move that the board approve the updated child safety policy, which updates the current version from twenty twenty-one. And which has been reviewed by the library's legal counsel. A redline version detailing additions and deletions is in this board packet. As presented to be posted on our website and reviewed with staff by the library director. Do I have a second?
Seven.
Discussion? Any discussion?
I, I think this policy was pretty cut and dried. Thank you for. Updating it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Second motion is I move that the board approve the updated whistleblower policy, which updates the current version from twenty eighteen. Which has been reviewed by the library's legal counsel to conform to New York State law. Again, a redline version detailing additions and deletions is in this board packet. As is the law firm's annotated version with their comments on relevant changes in law. As presented to be, one, posted on our website, two, reviewed with staff by the library director. Note that we have also advised our library director that Appendix A is required to be posted where staff frequent. A staff room or bulletin board. Do I have a second for the motion?
John is committee member. You want a second?
Would we like to have a discussion?
This is a policy that's largely dictated.
Right, correct, and that it's just important to, I mean, as we are moving through all of these policies and updating them on a schedule. This one just came at a great time because New York State also updated it. Okay, and then the next review point is in five years, but I'm imagining if anything should happen to it. Then, then we'll of course review it at the time.
Okay.
Okay.
All, all in favor? All, all in favor? Aye. That's unanimous.
One second. Denise.
Yes, sure. So are you saying that, so now, does this mean that these, these policies that you're talking about now, that they're final? And they're to be posted on the website?
Correct.
For the director to talk to us now about them after they're final?
Correct.
Correct. So you're, it sounds like you're like, well, wouldn't we be spoken to about them before they become final? Okay, so having said that, I think that that's great and I'm going to bring that to my policy committee. And I think that we should talk about that. So I will say that if you have any comments. Or questions or anything regarding these, the, the policies that we're talking about after the, after Bob has spoken to you about them. Um, I, Bob, please bring it to the committee's attention and we will certainly, um. Take any changes under advisement and bring it to legal and do, you know, react procedurally as we do.
But you're exactly right, and that's the purpose of having a library director on the committee is one, to bubble up any concerns that the staff has with any policies. So that in addition to changing law, et cetera, you know, we're addressing policies timely. Uh, but also to, to vet, you know, proposed changes, uh, with the staff. So that should absolutely be part of the process.
Okay.
And we, Bob, that's easily addressed. You, what, weekly department head meetings?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Um, Pam, I apologize. I am going to ask a question about the child safety policy, which I should have brought up in discussion. Forgive me, we had talked about the term vicinity that council raised. Were you going to?
It was.
Modify that?
Yes, it was, um. It was changed.
Okay.
To.
Where, where area?
Child, it was changed, I did, we, it, it, the point, uh, one of the points says, oh, we'd be in the same vicinity. We changed it to area. Okay. Okay, thank you. That was, that's good. Okay, um. Great. Do you?
I must say, I sort of wrestled with that because we, we talked about room, but room would be hard if a child enters a restroom. Does the guard have to go to? Yeah, it was impossible to come up with a very specific term.
Vicinity feels a little antiquated.
Yeah.
So that was a great pickup.
Okay.
Okay, do we want to? I'd like you to be assured that, that even though we are voting on these policies tonight. There is always room for them to be brought back. To, you know, to the committee and for changes to be made, okay?
But, but because also in the packet, it says that you, we did the circulation policy, which includes collection.
Correct, I'm going to address that tonight. Okay, so for, so for right now, we're right on whistleblower, okay?
Jim, Jim, do you want to, can we take a vote on?
Yes.
I don't want to. All in favor?
I thought we said whistleblower.
Whistleblower.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did. We're okay. We did, we put those two, our pass.
Okay, I'm going to move past the circulation policy.
Okay.
And I'm going to go to program policy. Okay, my, the motion on the table that I have is I move that the board approve the new program policy. Which provides important clarification to the public and which has been reviewed by the library's legal counsel as presented to be. One, posted on our website and two, reviewed with staff by the library director. Do I have a second?
And this is a wholly new.
This is a whole new policy.
I guess I discuss. Okay, so now I'll discuss. This is wholly new.
Okay, so this is a wholly new policy. The policy that was in place on the website and reviewed, I'm going to hope reviewed by staff. Previously for years and years and years was what the policy committee felt was a job description. So we completely re, you know, just revamped it and came up with a new program policy. Which again, has been in the board packet for, um, a couple of weeks now. So I do hope that everyone has had a chance.
Yep.
To review it. And any feedback on it is welcome.
We have a second? But we already seconded and this is our discussion, so can we turn to vote? All in favor? Aye. Brian, unanimous.
Okay, so we're not going to vote on the updated circulation policy tonight because. The de-selection, because there are parts of it, including the de-selection of material and extended loan policy. And selection of materials really needs to be put into its own policy, well, collection policy. So, um, I can say to you, uh, I can say to all that are in this room that, um, I will. I will update the, the circulation policy for September and present a collection policy for September. At which time the board will vote on it.
Okay, so we'll have both.
Correct.
For our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
You're, okay. We're tabling this one, right.
It's for the.
Correct, and I will say that I have handed out the financial policy to all. Everybody has had that now for a couple of weeks, like to, you know, really get that on the September. Uh, September agenda also.
Okay.
That we could be able to vote on it.
Okay, that's the purchase.
Correct, okay, great. Um, want to move?
Thank you for that.
Of course, thank you for moving the policies forward.
Um, do you want to move into the charter?
Sure. Yes, I do, if you want me to, okay, um. You know what, I don't have, it, it's, it's in all my work. Do you, do you have? Okay, do you want me to go through it the way we went through it?
Okay.
Uh, we're, we decided though that we were just going to do the charter amendment.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. So the library's charter is our governing document. Uh, it is filed with the, uh. State University of New York, uh, it hangs on the wall of our library. Uh, as first drafted and it frankly, um, says very. It has very few constraints. Uh, it addresses the period of time wherein the, um, Grunfeldts were kind enough to donate the, um, real estate. And the Chapagwa Central School District, uh, made the building that was under construction. And the, um, land, uh. Part of what would become our, uh, public library that, that we're in today. Um, one of the constraints that is in the charter as drafted. Is that the term of office for the trustees is five years. That charter was amended in two thousand and ten. Um, but the trustee term was, and, and a number of points were amended. The term length was not amended. Uh, we are proposing a petition, um. To the State University of New York for charter amendment. To modify the term for trustees to three years from five years. On an ongoing basis as of the two thousand and twenty four elections. Uh, so going forward, we would have, uh, trustees in place for three year terms. The new trustees elected would serve for three years. Uh, that does not affect, we have two trustees, um, Brian Cook and George Benak. Who are elected for five year terms that would not be modified. This would be a go forward provision. So to do so, um, we need to vote on proceeding, should the board choose, uh, with a petition. To make that change. The petition does not mean the change is guaranteed. Uh, that is up to, uh, State University of New York, as I keep saying. Uh, but we would file the petition, it, we would expect it to take a couple of months to progress. And with that, if, if that were approved. Uh, and I certainly, you know, from my research of the, uh, re- request for charter changes by libraries. It, this seems like the sort of thing that would be approved. Upon such a approval, uh, the board could then modify the trustee term length under our bylaws. Um, the board has the ability with a majority vote to amend our bylaws. With the exception of anything stated in the charter, and as I said, that's the major constraint. So, do you want to put forward a? Motion to change our New York State Charter, Library Charter. Oh, I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna screw this up, okay? The motion is to change our New York State Library Charter from. Three, from.
Stipulate.
Stipulate. Correct, that stipulates, uh, a trust, five year trustee term to a three year trustee term.
Okay, I second the motion. Discussion?
And, um, Brian, I'm sorry you weren't able to join us for the last meeting. We did, we did have a healthy discussion. We had, uh, we talked about in our, um, August tenth special meeting that, um. Uh, in retrospect, we mishandled this issue by, um, presenting it, um, in July. Uh, without enough advanced discussion, um, education, et cetera, with respect to our new board members. And so, uh, the vote did not pass, uh, we resolved to come back to the table.
Table, actually.
It was table, correct.
It didn't fail, it was just tabled.
Thank you, and we resolved to discuss it further and come back to the table. Uh, to have a further vote, so, uh, we had the luxury of some discussion on August tenth. Do you have any?
I think I'm in agreement.
Questions, concerns?
Think it makes sense.
Okay. Okay, um, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous.
That's great.
Um, Brian, we also, um. And, and it was primarily to, to benefit John and George being newer to the board. We talked about the variety of bylaws amendments, uh. Were, we had feedback from council on a few additional points today, so we will, um. Amend the current red lined version of our bylaws. Uh, and move to present those for a vote excluding the term length. Because I do, do expect that decision to take a couple of months. Uh, we will present that, those changes, which include things like making a personnel committee a standing committee, things like that. Uh, making, putting those up for vote in our September eleventh meeting.
Anything else for?
No, it's great policy and bylaws. That was a lot.
Thank you very much. Okay. Bury myself paper wise, um. George, anything, well, let me move to John and Personnel first.
Buildings and grounds, did you, you already knew that?
Uh, I was going to circle back to that if that's acceptable.
Um, so there's one issue with Personnel that I just want to talk about. I know that I had emailed from this and I, I thought this was going to make the board pack and I don't think it did. Was the issue around, um, a circulation.
Motion.
A motion.
Yes, thank you for sharing that with us.
Should we delay until September on that? I mean, I.
No, you can present that.
Okay.
The, the motions are to, you know, help brief us what you did via email.
Okay.
Um, and where possible, we like to post them, but it's not a requirement.
Wanted to make sure I follow protocol.
Yeah.
So let me just spend a moment here just talking about this motion. Um, and I want to read, um, and because I got some, um, good language here that I think is worth just, um, having in the public discussion. As Marge Herland so articulately expressed, the needs of the circulation desk are, um. That we need to, um, have, um, staffing rearrangements. And so, the, um. Um, sorry, I want to get the language here so I can refer clearly. So the motion, um, would be, um, I move to that the board consolidate several vacancies in the circulation department. To fill a full time entry level position of library clerk at thirty five hours a week. At the rate of twenty five dollars per hour. This proposal is budget neutral. That's my motion.
I was happy with.
Okay. Discussion, um. So just to go on, I think that Marge did a nice job of, of, of mentioning that there needs to be, um, an expansion and an addition. Uh, the people who work at the circulation desk so that we're not faced with the situation of having to plug in a lot of. Um, hard timers and that we can sort of build, um, a pool of people who have institutional knowledge. And who are able to, um, do lots of different things, um, that are required at the library. Um, I met with Marge and Pam, you were at that meeting, uh, about a month ago and it was, uh. It was very informative, so I think there's a rationale for it. Um, as far as I know, this position, because of the current vacancies, the position will be budget neutral. So I don't think it impacts the budget. I know that it is not common, just to be clear, to sort of do these kinds of things after the close of the budget season. But I believe that because of the sort of fluid nature of the, um, circulation desk. It's necessary to make this move at this time rather than delaying for the budget season.
Okay. Any concerns, questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. There we go. The rookie that can do it, you know, it takes a while.
Yes. Anything else?
The employee handbook, um, that's a work in progress, um, and, um, we're going to be meeting, um. I think as a committee.
August twenty second.
On August twenty second, if the committee can discuss, um, modifications and changes to the employee handbook. So, um, stay tuned for, um, more information on that. Um, and then the library director performance appraisal, uh, that's also going to be forthcoming. So, um, that will also be in the September meeting as well. Okay.
Now, are you going to appoint to the librarian two vacancy and the librarian one after that at this meeting?
Librarian two and librarian one. As far as I, and I, I may not have all this with that, we were going to do the library clerk position. They just did, right, to solve that at this meeting, but I was not prepared to make any other additions. Um, at this, at tonight, okay, yeah.
Did you want to propose something for John to?
Well, I, I had.
Making a motion?
I had emailed him on Friday, um. But perhaps wasn't enough time to be included. And maybe we can get it into the, the next.
September eleventh.
September eleventh meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
You're going to leave us on the edge of our seats or do you want to give us a little preface or?
No, I, um, I, I'm happy to share the good news. That librarian one who's been acting department head, Denise Minsen, was reachable for librarian two. And that I would like to proceed with her appointment to the librarian to department head position for adult services. Uh, as soon as possible. And furthermore, that we interviewed internal candidates to, uh, replace Denise at librarian one. And we identified a part time librarian, Amy Berger, who's been with us for many years. Who was also reachable for the librarian one position and would accept, um, the appointment to that position as well. So we have a nice.
That's great.
Succession going, a little promotion train going and, uh. that's all I have on those points right now.
Okay. And you'll give John all the financial detail and timing detail, et cetera, so he can make that motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. If if you'll let us know if there's a timing crunch with respect to that. I think there is not because you're going to also be looking for retroactive compensation, right? So we
Correct.
We aren't really missing anything apart from appropriate titling for two individuals, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay, so we'll we'll address that when you have the full details and Okay, does that make sense to you, John?
Yeah, it sure does. Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, well, we're we're happy that the department is so well-staffed that it makes sense for all this to all to play so nicely. Okay. George, anything from a communications perspective?
Sure, I was successful in getting posted to the community bulletin board in town.
We were very excited.
Library meeting was nine seventy P M. And the quick map looks like our in-person attendance increased by fifty percent. Advertising works. So I do, I I was curious about what else would be appropriate to post there. We have any, we have, you know, upwards of four or five events in the library every day. You know, put all of that there, but certainly the board meetings. And I'm wondering what other types of things that are are more general interest to the community would be appropriate to post there. I don't know, not baby time story hour or something like that, which is a nice thing, but I don't there'll be just too much on the
Do you have a sense for the town's appetite? In other words, will they give us a certain number of slots a week or?
I only, I cannot speak directly. I I just communicated through email.
Okay.
And the person in charge who did indicate, give me anything that you have is fine.
Okay.
There were some, she gave you some restrictions about what's optimal in terms of number of characters. But again, I think that if we had some event, like I know we have the music on Fridays, the band, that might be some kind of more general that will be worthwhile posting on the on the bulletin board.
Okay. So does it make sense for you to sit with your department heads and you know, ask for where you go reporting, you know, decide on some number that we can propose to the town, some number of events? And let's let's get that cadence rolling with them.
Yeah. Yeah, in in any given month, there's usually one or two events or perhaps a series of events that you can put into one image slide. So we'll do some horse trading among the department heads and figure out which limited number of programs will get that kind of special highlighting. They say they can also post the Chappaqua Library logo, which I just looked at a website, I could put that up there. It just
Oh, that's great.
Little nicer, having just texted course this.
Right, right. Can you work with, share with Bob, you know, any insight that they gave you in terms of characters and that sort of thing? That's great. Nice advancement. Okay, then I'll jump to building and grounds. Bob, I I wondered relative to the survey results. So we we were excited to get the survey posted around, I think, July first. Closed out July nineteenth, we had what sixty-seven-ish respondents? Pardon? Thank you. Any commentary on the project that we're kind of moving down the path with K G and D? Which is a consideration of frankly, exciting things like the entrance plaza as well as the main courtyard, the children's area courtyard and the theater entrance versus, you know, frankly, for the public, the less exciting things that are are more maintenance in that, you know, we've got facade elements that need to be updated, repaired, et cetera. So were there any survey results that jumped out to you in terms of public interest for these outside outdoor spaces?
Well, first, let me say that we tried not to leave the public with too much description of what we already knew we would like to be doing, because we were trying to see if there were other new ideas out there. And I'm, I don't know, a little bit happy, but also kind of disappointed to say that I didn't really see any new ideas out there that we as staff and the architects themselves didn't seem to already include in the initial plans. So if anything, the good side
Validation.
It's validation, though, of what we we had already come up with. And it demonstrates that we're on the right path and we didn't really overlook anything that that there was to be overlooked.
Okay. Well, that makes sense because you'd spent a lot of time with the staff and the department heads in terms of, you know, their their sense of of what our patrons want, what the community would benefit from, right?
And to credit the architects as well, because they, it's not their first library exterior project either, so.
Right. Okay. So on that, we have included the initial insights from K G and D, our selected architect and their subcontractor landscape architect. And it's it's pretty exciting stuff. They've chumped the their recommendations into different areas of focus in including the children's courtyard and the theater entrance, the main courtyard, the front plaza, as as well as, as I said, the the more less exciting things like dealing with our capstones and facade and necessary repairs there. So they've laid out for us and and it's included in the posting a variety of different recommendations. We'll be discussing that as a board. And the Building and Grounds Committee will return to K G and D for some clarification and try and, you know, kind of reduce the number of considerations at play here and really focus on the ones that we think should be brought to the board and the public. And then we'll be scheduling probably in October, probably at our October. Should this be via a, probably needs to be in a regular meeting. It's going to involve a lot of time. Yes. Is the only difficulty. Yeah, it's probably an hour of time in the regular meeting. So I would we'll bring K G and D forward to make a formal presentation to the entire board. We've been sharing the materials, of course, across the board as they've been developed, but formal presentation as well as to the participating public. And Bob, I think that you had talked about, you know, putting some of this, you know, there's a lot of great visual information on different approaches that that we can take and putting some of that up in the library for patrons to weigh in on. Perhaps we can come up with some form of feedback on the website where we're considering, you know, a few options and and are looking for any interested members of our public to weigh in. I think people will be excited by, you know, at least sort of storyboards that we were, that you were envisioning.
Jennifer, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Earlier tonight, Bob had mentioned the possibility of going to a bond. Is is that your thinking? Or where are you on that issue of whether the this work would require a bond?
Yes. Yes, that is a definitive yes. Those are substantial dollars that we're talking about. And as mentioned, you know, they have chunked it and we could take an approach, as Bob referenced earlier, of addressing some of the projects, you know, breaking them up in between even twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Right. And how much consultation or participation does the school district have on this process, given that they ostensibly own the building?
They definitely own the building and and all the nineteen seventies furniture that remains. And the land. And so we would need to invite them to the October presentation or a representative.
Yeah, okay.
And historically, the individual who had taken sort of ownership of library facilities issues was Mr. Messner, and I don't know who, you know, succeeds him in that regard. So so that's something we're going to have to clarify. It's an excellent point.
Okay.
Anything further you want to say in terms of the K G and D concepts?
No, I, well, yeah, let me just add my own editorializing, which is to say, it would really refresh our facade, in other words, our street-facing part of the library, and it would really create some really exciting vibrant spaces. And most importantly, I think accessibility, where it's really sorely lacking. Our program coordinator, Joan, has told me the really horrifying stories of trying to bring guests into our courtyard who just simply want to use a walker or a wheelchair and can't come into a concert, or it's just so onerous to get them in that they leave frustration and don't come back. And that's really worth addressing a- a- at any time, but especially during some really needed repairs and renovations to the library exteriors, it's a good time to do them.
Yeah, it you you raise a good point. The the driving force behind this, besides keeping the building in in best repair is to return more space to the public, you know, increase the usability of of space. And we all saw during the pandemic, the import of the outdoor spaces. And, you know, we've we've taken that to heart and want to make a lot more of that space much more accessible and usable. I think the public is going to be excited by some of the ideas presented. Um, we have, so so that's conceptual at this point in time. We have another project that has been underway, which is our R F P with respect to this room, the theater and our equipment. Much of which fell fell certainly to non-use and aged out during the pandemic. And Bob went to, I believe, seven different providers for proposals. We had one provider, a company named D N R, who was strongly represented by our prior would be Carrie's term, Carrie Crams, who works for the town in media and really served as media consultant, A V consultant with respect to the librarian used to have office space here. Anyway, there was one firm she recommended above and beyond. They came in early. We said, great, we appreciate your proposal, but we've got to execute a these are sizable dollars. We have to execute a full R F P. And Bob went to market together with the efforts of our facilities consultant. Do you want to talk about the results that we obtained?
Sure, yeah, we had one firm that did reply to the R F P, but replied by saying that they wouldn't really like to participate in this process as as we outlined in the R F P.
They preserve, they prefer to be more consultative, right?
That's right. They wanted to more or less be on call as a consultant. And then make the kinds of changes that we needed in a piece pieced-out fashion. The another proposal that we had came in quite late. And the Edutec proposal was included in the scan. But frankly, the D N R proposal addresses our needs. And if you're asking for my editorial opinion, I think it's the strongest of the of the of the two submitted. That's all I have to say. It it addresses our it it addresses the most of our needs, which really revolve around a a non-technical staff of, we're we're a staff of librarians and we have a lot of public groups who would like to be able to use this space for their productions, for their meetings, for their live broadcasts and and webcast meetings. So we really need something that's user-friendly for the non-technical expert. And that's what the D N R proposal seems to have most understood.
As well as including I I wouldn't say necessarily cutting-edge, but you know, appropriate quality of equipment, et cetera, right?
Right, and cost-effective equipment.
Including the screen, a replacement screen.
Including a replacement screen and an assisted listening audio loop. And but also preserving elements that are already here that have additional years of life in them. Specifically with regards to certain certain parts of the sound and microphone system that can be I don't want to say salvaged, it makes it sound worse than it is, but that don't need to be replaced at this time.
Shentel, can I call on you? Because I know you had follow-up calls with Edutec who we worried about, was their proposal sufficiently fleshed out? And I think you were chasing some questions with respect to the D N R proposal. Do you have any?
Yeah, I did second. Fearful that they were misled for the, for some reason, they thought that we were asking them to keep all of our current equipment and simply put in a touchscreen system of a sort so that we can continue using it. For them, it would salvage everything we have currently and just try to get it to where it's operational. And then D N R for them to complete that out and redo. It's a good out and redo. They want to install or bring in all new equipment. One of my biggest concerns was the screen because they did come in very low. They actually explained to me that it's a free screen, that they would be donating it to us. They're allowed to donate it to any municipality they're choosing and because they've worked with us and they enjoy Carrie and enjoy working with Carrie, they chose us. But we would have to obviously grant them the proposal in order for them to give it to us.
Okay. And I think Edutec didn't attend the walkthrough event that was offered either. Yeah.
Actually, the other way around. Edutec was present.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And still came away, so.
Yeah. Also, frankly, this is just me. Having to chase you down for as long as we did for the proposal, I, for me, you're kind of already done.
Right.
I wasn't too thrilled with that.
So ready.
Yeah.
Whereas D N R, by comparison, they laid out the the full team.
Provided their
They were so proactive.
Carrie Crams two projects for her.
Yeah.
And she said, you know.
They actually came and worked with this. They've done whatever repairs that they could. So they, if anybody very much understand what needs to get done and what can be saved and not saved themselves.
So can I ask the question?
Of course.
Essentially, what this project sort of looks like is getting the theater back up as a usable order of space.
The technology within the screen and projector. Anything else?
Right.
Cosmetic-wise, no?
Right, seats, acoustics, all that. Right, seats, acoustics, all that, not going to be part of this process at all.
Though they would relocate some of the lighting, I believe.
Oh, really?
Okay. I was reading the letter from the founder and talks about they provide one year of immediate support. Doesn't say, he says education is critical, but I, I would hope the, the training of the staff would be included. I don't see anything specifically addressing that, how much training are they willing to do? And after one year of yearly support in the contract, what is it going to cost? Going forward from there for the annual or semi-annual?
So, as per my understanding of the contract, and Bob, feel free to weigh in. They did propose, they've got a line item here of training, commissioning, support, project management of four hours in year one, and then they've got proposals to add additional years under the contract. And the pricing for the subsequent years rises by about five percent each year from seventy-six hundred to eighty-six, approximately eighty-six hundred for years two through five. So they have taken that into account. Bob, did you have a, of, of the proposals that they'd provided, which included some optional costs, different year contracts? Did you have a recommendation?
Sorry, it's been a minute since I looked at it. Can I take a peek at yours?
And can you talk about where one of the reasons we really urgently wanted to bring this to the table is in hopes of obtaining funding relative to a board-approved project? Some, some portion of funding, right?
I would have to check my notes, but I, if I remember correctly, the Sennheiser Mobile Connect ALS was definitely wanted. The Ruckus R three twenty unleashed indoor wireless access point would support community members connecting to be able to project wirelessly. That was also wanted. It's the next two items that I can't recall whether or not we wanted them. So if you, if it, rather than let it impede the adoption.
Oh, no, we definitely, that's the screen. So that's the labor with respect to the screen. And that's additional support for the Ruckus system. So I think, I think.
So all of the elements that are optional are desired? Okay, and then what was the second part of your question?
Was whether we lock in for a multi-year range?
Highly recommended to lock in for the multi-year arrangement. I think that's the best bet also is, as the not replaced elements of the system continue to age. It would be nice to have an ongoing relationship with a consultant to recommend four pieces to replace, so that the next time we find ourselves in a situation like this, we are actually ongoing consulting and upgrading as we go. Additionally, the ongoing support would allow for additional training as natural staff attrition and new hires come on board. Without having it to become a staff training staff situation.
Chantel, sorry to hit you with another query, but in terms of the subsequent years, do you know would we have to pay that upfront or would that be invoiced, for example, in twenty twenty-four?
That frankly wasn't discussed, but I can get to an answer tomorrow.
Their proposal was voluminous, so it might be within that. Okay, so, so then the last element I'd asked you to speak to, I know you and Chantel have been working on this, would be some potential offset of this cost from a grant.
So, elements of this which are arguably a restoration of the facility that increase the accessibility and not strictly the ADA accessibility, but overall, the programming bandwidth of the library and elements that free up staff time and attention can all be supported in the New York State Construction Grant, up to fifty percent of the project. So I don't have a dollar amount in mind, but Chantel and I are proceeding forward with the grant application to get as many of those hardware components to fall into one of those categories as possible.
I'm applying for the whole thing.
For example, the elements of ongoing system support, annual support would not likely fall within.
Yeah, but for Dana, it's submit the entire amount of the proposal.
Okay, great.
Okay, so if we're talking hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, best case unlikely, but best case would be fifty percent of that amount.
Correct.
Probably more likely, sounds like if I'm reading between the lines, is something like twenty-five percent of this total?
It would be up to the committee.
It could, by the committee, you mean the WLS? But also the state, because ultimately the state decides which elements can be covered. But you're, Chantel is still right, up to fifty percent.
And you're operating under a deadline for this, right? Twenty-fifth of this month to have our proposal.
To have our application in.
Okay. All right, so thank you for that preface and, and feedback from both of you. I will make a motion and we'll open up to further discussion. So I, I make a motion that we proceed with the non- cheapest proposal of two obtained from our recent RFP for an AV update for our library theater inclusive of almost one hundred percent new equipment and a new operating screen. As well as the servicing that, that we've been discussing for the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and forty-six cents. The piece that we will look into and come back to this board is whether that people, basically the timing of payments. Do we pay fifty percent upfront and fifty percent, you know, at completion and, and when would that, you know? So we'll lay out a timeline. And also, we have this question mark of the additional years under contract and when the billing would occur for those years.
In it, proceed with. Proceed with.
A proposal for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty and forty-six cents.
One twenty-six.
Six twenty point four six.
Six twenty point four six, right.
And that's a proposal from DNR.
From DNR. Does that DNR stand for something or?
That's DNR Laboratories is the full name. Do I have a second?
Yes, absolutely.
Pam's seconds? Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on the comments. Question is, has anyone either spoken to the references? And then here, the Westport Library, I mentioned Darian. Has anyone gone and visited some of these theaters and seen what this, what it looks like and what these features are and, you know, what, what do we need? My comment would be that I can't really read this proposal. I don't understand any of this stuff, so it's very hard for me to to make a, an informed comment on what this technology is and what it should cost.
So I can tell you that our facilities consultant, as part of the RFP process, followed up with the references with respect to all the respondents, which is great, and, and the feedback on DNR was excellent. Frankly, the, the strongest recommendation, in addition to the other libraries, is, is that of Carrie Crams. Who really was of tremendous assistance. You know, has been of tremendous assistance to this library for many years. But with respect to this proposal in really guiding us in setting the specs, et cetera.
Have you visited any of these theaters in these other?
Well, I've, I've been to CPAC and I have not been to the Westport Library or Darian Library.
Be curious to hear what their experience with the training and the
I used to work at the Darian Library and their theater is very good. I can reach out to
I only ask for, trust the work.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a sizable spend. Okay. How about if I modify the motion to condition it upon Bob and, and/or his department heads checking in with some of the referenced libraries, either to, you know, with an in-person visit or further phone calls beyond our facilities consultant to give us the comfort level with, I think in particular, you're getting to service, right? That's unreasonable. Bob, Robin?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? To remember, we did include a line item in the budget.
So are we, are we voting on this?
Yeah, we're still in discussion, but I just wanted to check the budget real quickly. Do either of you gentlemen remember?
Yeah, the amount for the consulting?
Yeah, I want to say we put in what we were anticipating at the time at about fifty percent. Is that right? Can you readily find it within the budget?
It would be in the, not page one, but beginning on page three is the supporting logic of the budget. On the professional services line, if I'm not mistaken.
I know we talked this through.
Do you have the rest of the budget?
No, I don't have the full budget. I'm looking at the financial statements though.
If you look at professional services, beginning on page three where it breaks down, the, the page after the staff salaries and wages. And then go down to professional services. I think you'll see AV consultant listed among them. Is that right?
Go look on her computer.
Yeah, let me take.
Better than anyone. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, we put architects, designers, consultants for the children's room theater and facade. And we budgeted sixty-five thousand and the note cuts off, unfortunately, in this version. But it begins to note just the consulting and that the if the note didn't cut off on this public-facing document, it would go on to say that the construction would have to come out of the the capital, the capital funds.
Okay, okay. I thought we put some amount toward it. So sixty-five, we knew the KG and D expense. So I'm guessing that left about twenty thousand toward this project. Out of that total. Any other? We need John. We'll return to when John returns, I'll just make the comment that we've also included in the board packet proposals from Stratagem Security, which we referenced in prior meetings. Those are not proposals that we're choosing to move forward with at this time, but they were noteworthy. They were solicited by us and we wanted to make them, you know, available to the public. So John, any further questions or concerns? Should we move to a vote? Okay, all in favor? unanimous. So Godspeed to you, Chantel, in structuring our grant proposal, because any offset we can obtain to that considerable amount would be fantastic. Okay. Anything else jump to mind for you from building and grounds?
Before you do, let me make a comment about the grant process, which is that we do need to certify the state that we have a hundred percent of the funds to do this ourselves. We have to say that, and then they merely reimburse us for the outlay, so we cannot depend upon the state grant.
It would, it would be a gift, yes. Okay. Is this really falls under finance unless you want me to speak to the insurance proposal from?
I don't have the proposal, have they?
Okay, so, so we, thank you, Chantel, obtained renewal proposals for the September first, twenty twenty-three to September first, twenty twenty-four. Renew, renewal of our property and casualty insurance. The amount for the renewal premium is twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. This is through Utica National Insurance, who is, if memory serves me, the insurer that we also moved to for workers' compensation in twenty twenty-three. That was a change we made in one of the last few meetings we had. Chantel, can you remind me if you know how much this went up? I want to say it went up about five to ten percent on a year-over-year basis?
Over the last year, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and it's through Regan Agency. We ran out of time. One of the proposals I have is, we, we have talked as a board in our prior board that where possible, our preference would be to work with local providers for most any, all that we do. Chapacor preferred or as local as possible. Regan's done a great job for this library for many, many years, but I do think for twenty twenty-four I will be proposing to Bob and Chantel that we obtain proposals from Levitt First, which is, Ken First is, is based in, in Chapacor as one of the principals and provides business insurance to a number of libraries as well as other businesses, so. With that note, I make a motion that we accept the renewal of the terms and conditions as quoted for the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents for the nine-one period. Dollars and seventy-four cents for the nine-one period. Do I have a second? Brian, seconds?
So what 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 are we going to ask Levitt and First to to bid on?
We're going to renew and.
We're going to renew and then ask for the next time.
Twenty twenty-four, we we just don't have time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. Uh any discussion? No, okay, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you for managing that, Chantel.
Mm-hmm.
Any, and thank you for that reminder. Any other um buildings and ground issues?
No, I think we're recovered.
Okay. Uh and you're checking with Strategum to make sure that the work that we'd approved is being executed timely, right?
Yeah, I sent an email about that. I I just haven't seen the reply.
Okay.
I'll I'll circle back and make sure that I do.
Okay, because that was important. Okay, anything else from our committees?
No.
Okay, um.
I neglected to give my reminder that um with respect to the extensive modifications for policies, et cetera, that we need to. You to manage your staff to go through the website and uh add the approved. Updated or new policies as well as delete the um old ones, and I know that. You all have been working on reorganize the whole site.
It is very helpful that you built it into the agenda and that makes the agenda become a task list for me afterwards, so thank you for that, yes.
Okay. Okay, um let's see. So our next meeting, our next regular meeting will be Monday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh in person, our next special meeting will be Thursday, September twenty-first. Uh twenty twenty-three in our programs room in the library.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that should be video conference uh with video access for the public as well. Uh. Any other comments on next steps?
I, this is my uh second time I mentioned this, that Community Day is.
Oh, thank you, yep.
On the night, we won't be meeting as a group prior to that, so I guess the next time I'll see all of you in. And room, that'd be, you will, I mean, following that will be the year today.
I'm I'm willing to help set up a tag if that's necessary on the night.
Okay.
I don't know.
And Robin's in charge, right? You're sort of leading the. Charge for the library. Oh, that's, sorry, I'm not, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah, we have, we've already figured out nothing for it, but we would appreciate more volunteer.
Okay.
Please stop on.
What time do you need to set up?
Well, interesting thing, we haven't heard that yet about the time that we need to be set up. And we also heard today that there is some discussion that the time of Community Day might be shifted to Comedy Department Market.
Oh.
So, do you hear any confirmation?
Okay.
Actually, no. In past years, I've been familiar. Yeah, a lot, a lot of stuff that's. Uh yeah. The time, it's coming out of the difference earlier and the market seems to be properly right. Um so we'll see how this.
Yeah, but anyone who is available, what I think is most likely to be some some four-hour period between ten AM and four PM. Um please let us know.
Okay, great, I I definitely would would love to um. Sit at the tables and talk to the public, et cetera, so I'll I'll be joining you for some portion of that time. Um. I I before we close, I've got one additional element. I wanted to um. Proceeding, Brian, I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize. We, I think you vetted this before and we reviewed it again on August tenth. Um are you fine with us posting this version of the annual calendar?
Yeah, I only have one.
Oh, no, no, not our meetings, but but definitely let me know about that, yeah, the broader.
Yeah.
Okay, so um I'll I'll send the final version to if it's not in this packet. Um and if you can post, make sure that's posted as a replacement to the version that's on there now. Um. And with that, I'll I'll move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second? Seconds, Pam seconds. Any discussion, any concerns? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. Chantel, I neglected to check if there were additional public comments.
Totally.
No, okay. Okay, shoot, thank you very much. Thank you all for attending. Thank you for attending.